Good evening. I call to order the December meeting of the Florence City Planning Commission, and as always, on behalf of the Commissioners and the planning staff, I want to thank those that are here tonight. It is a special time of the year, a special time when we all have a chance to appreciate God's blessings, and so I'm going to ask Mr. Moses if he will give our invocation tonight.
Most pleased to do so. We always say, always remember, let's pray for one another, because we don't know when it'll be our last time. Dear Lord, I want to thank you for this day. We want to thank you for the business of the city of Florence. We love that Florence is growing, growing in many different directions. Let's make sure that we do the right things for the citizens of Florence. Lord bless this committee here as we go through this agenda today. Let them have faith, leadership, and to make the right decision for the citizens of Florence. These are the blessings, as in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Moses. We'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to which it stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right. As usual, the Commissioners received their packets in a timely manner. Ms. Elaine, Mr. Johnson, thank you. Everyone has had a chance to review the minutes from last month, and if there are no changes, corrections, or recommendations, I call for a motion.
Motion approved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And like signs, nay and ayes have it unanimously. All right. The first item on the agenda is PC 2024-26.
First, actually, we have the approval of the 2025 meeting calendar.
Okay, I have, I guess, an old...
Yeah, I did not. I sent it to you as a mail.
That's fine. I did not, unfortunately, print up that. Do all the Commissioners have...
I've got it on the screen. Derek, can you put that up, please?
Okay.
That's September, not February.
Okay. Yeah, those are so hard to say yea or nay.
Well, it's the second Tuesday of every month.
Okay. All right. The Commissioners had a chance to very quickly look at that, and it stays in the same position in a month. If there are no changes, I'll call for a motion.
Make a motion. We approve it.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve as Ms. Elaine has submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like signs, nay and ayes have it. Now, PC 2024-26. It's got a similar ring to it. Ms. Elaine, staff report, please.
All right. These will look familiar, and we...I will present 24, 26, and 24, 27, because they are related to each other, but you will need to take action on them separately.
And I will remind the Commissioners that there will not be a public hearing.
Correct, because we had that last month.
Right.
And I have not gotten any phone calls about any of this this month as well. So the first one is the request to rezone property that's already in the city limits from Commercial General. There's two parts to it, and Destination Select Use to Light Industrial. And this, again, is property that's located along Jenny O'Brien. The portion that's outlined in green is the portions that are being rezoned. And as you can see, the portion north of Jenny O'Brien is currently Commercial General. They want to take that to Light Industrial. And then the portion at the corner of Lucas and Jenny O'Brien is zoned Destination Select Use, which is another commercial designation as well. And the future land use calls for those to be general commercial and a corridor mixed use. Then the second part that...because this will all be one project eventually, is to annex a parcel and zone it Light Industrial, and this is immediately adjacent to that property. It's at the corner of Milwaukee and North Cashew. Here's a close-up to it, and as you can see, it is immediately adjacent to that portion that is zoned Commercial General. This is the scope of the project, and just to help you to visualize both of them together. So the lot on the left that is not colored is the one that needs to be annexed, and they're requesting the Light Industrial zoning for it. The pink portion is the one that's already in the city, but it's currently Commercial General, wants to go to Light Industrial. And then down on the lower right corner, the portion of that lot that will be rezoned, wants to be rezoned from Destination Select Use to Light Industrial. These are the Light Industrial uses. It's defined as uses that involve research and development, assembly, compounding, packaging, testing, or treatment of products, pretty much everything except manufacturing. And that is what they're asking the zoning to be. So that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Ms. Elaine. I'd like to address the Commissioners that were not here last month and the ones that were here last month. We had a great presentation from the planning staff, and Mr. Irvin addressed and answered questions, but I think the Commissioners that were here had additional questions that they were uncomfortable with. So for those that weren't here, we decided to defer it this month. I assume that those Commissioners that had questions have had those answered, and if not, you're welcome to pose those questions to staff. If not, I'll call for a motion.
I've got a question.
Okay.
Because I wasn't here last week. I just wanted to know, what are they planning on this lot? If we rezonate, what's the potential of doing big one, too?
Well, we can have staff explain what's allowed, which you just showed what's allowed in these zoning areas. I think the master plan has not been put together yet, and we can actually have Mr. Irvin come up and give a quick description of...like I said, I don't think it's a plan yet, but they're zoning it toward an industrial type of use, light, medium, and which, you know, you could easily say that that is a lot of industrial around that. So if that doesn't answer your question, I can either have staff...
Yeah, because see, when we rezonate things, if he'd have come up with a sketch plan, what we could rezonate, he'd come up, you know, he wants to know what's going to put there.
Yeah. Any rezoning request, a requirement is never to...I mean, you know, a person could rezonate a parcel without having any plan for it. You know, when people rezonate property, it opens it up to whatever's allowed in the zoning code at that time. You know, that's part of the rezoning process. So, you know, a sketch plan or a development plan is never a requirement of a rezoning. And even if they proposed that, they could go tomorrow and change that plan once it's been rezoned, you know, to something else that's within that same category. I mean, for instance, if somebody wanted to zone something to a Commercial General, they could propose a Walmart and then, you know, and say they're going to do a Walmart, and then after they get it rezoned, they could come back and do a Lowe's, or a Home Depot, or a strip mall, or anything that's allowed under, you know, that potential zoning.
Yeah. Once we rezonate things, that's what I'm saying. There's no potential what they're going to put, you know, I just like most stuff. You could put houses there. You could put apartment houses.
Well, they would be requesting the wrong zoning for housing or some of that. I think you have to be comfortable with the fact that Light Industrial will be the use there.
So that would be under points, points to consider, basically?
Yes.
Under number four. That covers it.
Right. All right. Any other questions?
I have a question. Jerry, you said around this, is the same zoning, same stuff, you know, across the road, beside it, pretty much adjacent to it, right?
We have a commercial across the street.
Pretty much that whole stretch of Cashew, though.
Well, you got across the road from Cashew, and then you got off the Milwaukee Drive there. All of that is, I understand it's county, but it's of the same type zoning they're kind of asking for, right?
That's correct. You can see to the north is B3, general business.
And Lucas is that they get it rezoned. So they're, the owners are the one that's requesting the rezoning for the people who are buying it, because it's part of the contingency.
Well, if you don't get it rezoned, it's not going to sell.
Right.
That's what you're talking about.
They're not going to buy it if it can't get rezoned. So they're currently under contract, and they came last week, and, I mean, not last week, last month.
Can you go back to where it shows the two different property, once more, please, just so we can...I think Mr. Moses, I'll just show you this, because it was confusing last week with all the colors. Let me show what I think. If you go back to what's currently zoned, right?
Essentially, see the ones outlined in red?
Right.
And this little place here, that's the entirety of the land.
Right. Go back to the splits, so I can show him what we're talking about. So the right side is owned by the Floyd family, and I think that's already in the city. They're asking us to rezonate. The left section, to be annexed, they want the same type of zoning. So that's contingent upon the sale. They're going to annex it into the city. That income comes to us, essentially, you know? So I think that's where I was a little confused last week, but they answered that question. So the right side, go Jerry, one more time.
Yeah, the right side's currently zoned Commercial General. The request is, and it's inside city limits.
Right.
The request is for it to go to Light Industrial. The left portion here, the kind of square portion, is currently outside of city limits. The request is for it to be annexed and zoned like the other to Light Industrial. So it would become essentially one parcel and one land mass.
You know, if you can envision on Highway 327 and 95, the touched-on energy park, that is heavy to Light Industrial, but it is well-maintained, you know, curb and gutter, and this is being allocated for like a business slash industrial park. And, you know, the opportunity there is to, you know, bring in businesses, bring in industry, and create jobs. Any other questions? All right. I'll call for the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve. Is there any further discussion?
Is that for the first one?
Yeah, this is for both.
The rezoning?
I would like for it to be for both, if we could.
Yeah. Both of them, this is one thing. You need to vote on a whole thing. I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay. To make it clear, this is voting on both parcels. No further discussion. I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like signs, nay and ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Irvin. All right. PC 2024-31. This is a request to approve the renaming of a public park here in Fair City. Ms. Elaine, staff report, please.
That's right. This is a request to rename what's known as Northwest Park at 801 Clement Street. It is currently zoned open space and recreation. It is owned by the city of Florence. It's one of the city's parks. And the member of city council, from what I understand, proposed the name of Mordecai C. Johnson. And as you have in your packets as well, there's all this information about Mr. Johnson. He graduated from Wilson High School, was born in Effingham. He worked as an attorney with some significant cases, and some significant milestones. Was the first African-American lawyer in the Department of Health, Education, Welfare, U.S. Commission on Civil Rights. He's also worked as a public school teacher and taught college courses at Francis Marion and University of South Carolina. In 1977, became the first African-American to hold a seat on Florence City Council, and in 1987, became the first African-American representative in the House of Delegates of the South Carolina Bar, and just was an active member here in the city of Florence. And so his name was recommended as a name for Northwest Park. And all three of these also have been reviewed by the Parks Commission, and they've endorsed the name changes on all three parks as well. So that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Ms. Elaine. I think that some of the Commissioners may have some questions tonight, but we will have a public hearing portion of this, and we can defer those questions to after the public hearing, or we can...which might be the easiest thing to do. So with that said, I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone in here that is far or against naming this park after this distinguished gentleman, like I told the Commissioners earlier, very impressive individual. Is anyone like to come forward regarding this park? Please. Yes, if you'll come to the podium and give us your name, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Jean Anne Thompson Zollkoffer, and I'm a resident of the Northwest community. I have no problem with renaming the park, but I do have a problem with naming it Mordecai Johnson. I feel and the rest of the Northwest community that a representative in that community that we should name it by a person that has actually done something for the Northwest community. You understand? So we would like to propose that we not actually name it right now until we have our monthly meeting, bring it before the people, let them suggest a person that they feel that should be honored, and that building be named after them. There are so many people in the neighborhood that has worked diligently, even to get the place there, and continue to work. So we want to ask you to postpone it until we have our meeting and bring our suggestion for the name. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming forward.
Yeah, you remember me?
I do. How could I forget? All right. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward on behalf or against this recommendation? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of this, and I invite the Commissioners for discussion before we even call for a motion.
Well, it's my recommendation. Northwest area I grew up in, still a part of. I'm the Neighborhood Association president, so I represent that area as well, and I would prefer, well, I would like to delay, defer us making any type of changes to the Northwest until community has some input on that.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak on this?
I have a question.
Okay.
This was proposed by whom?
This was filtered down from a member of city council.
And it has gone before the Parks Commission?
It did. It's not a requirement for it to go before the Parks Commission, but we felt that it should go to the Parks Commission. It's made up of representatives from, you know, throughout the city and the communities that, and also represent the individual parks. So we thought that was...
The city council, I'm sorry, excuse me, the city council sitting, city council person is from this area? Is that her district, or?
No.
Oh, it's not?
My question is, is 30 days enough time? I mean, you said you'll meet within the next 30 days, your committee?
They have an access community meeting, and they will decide as a community.
All right.
But...
I need for you to come back to the podium if you're going to continue. I'm sorry. Only for records purposes. That's recorded, and the city can't hear you from over there.
You can't hear me?
Perfect.
Okay. But I don't have a problem, like I said, with Mordecai Johnson. He didn't reside in our area. He's well-known as far as city council, which is overall everything, but we want to be more specific, because we want our people to be able to relate to the activities and whatnot that goes on in the Northwest community. That's the main thing.
We understand.
And I feel that we want to honor people that actually worked there, you know, worked to get the building, to maintain it, and that kind of thing. Let's honor the people, and I really want somebody that's still living. We're always waiting till the dead in the ground. But I think we should give us, give the person his flowers or her flowers while they're still living, so we need 30 days.
Thank you, Ms. Jean. I appreciate you coming forward again. Would a Commissioner like to propose...
Jerry has a question.
Oh, yes.
Can I add one thing?
Oh, yes.
One requirement, unfortunately, is that the person, or if it's named after a person, that the person is deceased. That's one of the requirements or by a city policy of naming a public place.
Okay. I have a problem for her, or is she dead?
Well, I didn't name that part. I'd have to look back at that one.
That's a...
We can look at that. We can look at that.
Just make that note when you have your meeting, that the city...
As a matter of fact, it's in the working facility.
Okay. Thank you all. Would you like to...
I was just going to say, and there are several others that have, and I could just call out a couple of names that actually have helped with starting the park or getting things for Northwest Park, and that was Ms. Harriet, I want to say Ms. Henry. I keep messing up her name. Ms. Harriet Smith. I kept saying the wrong name. Ms. Harriet Smith.
So we have several that we want to discuss and decide.
Yes. Yes, so it's just a couple of them.
All right. Well, I would invite, and we'll end the public hearing, and I'll invite a Commissioner to suggest a motion.
A motion that we defer naming or renaming Northwest Park until community input for next, I guess, January, our next meeting.
Okay. Have a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like signs, nay, and ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one is PC 2024-32, and Ms. Elaine, you've got double duty tonight.
I do.
Thank you.
And this is another naming of a public park. Say these things come in threes, right? So we got three of them. This is the park located between Javalee Circle and Westmoreland Avenue, and it also is owned by the city of Florence and zoned open space and recreation. And the future land use for it is a park and open space. And the request is to name it the John and Sylvia Javalee Park. And as you also have in your packet, the information about the Javalee family, and to your point, Ms. Dees, apparently they were instrumental in protecting this land and creating the park out of it, and so that is the reason for the request, for it to be named after them. So it's about half an acre, and so, or their home was. And so the request is for it to be called the John and Sylvia Javalee Park, and that concludes staff's report.
Let me just add a little bit more there. The John and Sylvia were both born in New York City, and they were married and had their, all their boys, their sons, up in New York City. And John was temporarily transferred to the, by the Wimworth Manufacturing Company, whom he was, he designed women's clothes for them, and over through the Lake City area. And then his family soon, after he got established here, his family soon moved down, and then that's when they became embedded in the community. It was in the early '60s. And then in the early '70s, there was a high-density development that was proposed for the park, and the Javalees organized kind of grassroots effort by the community to fundraise, and they, through their donations and those of others, they raised enough money to purchase the land that the park now sits on. So they gave that money to the city. The city purchased the property with those funds and then developed a park there. And then, you know, that's where we got Javalee Park from. So I just kind of want to give that little backstory on that.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. All right. If there are no questions of staff, I'll open the public hearing portion of this, and if anyone would like to come forward, far or against?
You know, I've been sitting quite. Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity.
If you will introduce yourself, Mr. Javalee. I know you very well, but I'm...
Thank you. There's five of us boys. I'm them before. They named me after my daddy, so I'm John Javalee, Jr.
Thank you for coming forward.
The best, right? Then they tried to improve on perfection with George. It didn't work. That's why they gave up. I hope this has been recorded, so we can tell George when you say it.
It is.
So Jerry was correct. Mom and dad helped raise the money. They put up a good portion of the funds themselves to be able to acquire that property. And then to fast forward, back when my father died in 2007 and moved my mother in with me. She lived with me until 2015, when she passed away. He was 93, she was 96.
Wow.
Means you're going to put it with me for a long time. But we kept the home. My brothers and I, we were using it as a clubhouse. And every other week, we'd get together and sit down, play cards, eat sandwiches, talk trash, just boy things. When COVID hit, George called and he said, "John, we need to settle the house," because we stopped getting together. So I moved everything into heated and cooled storage. I had the home inspected. I had a small repair list. We got the things taken care of. I had it reinspected, put it on the market in February of '22. March '22, we got a contract. They got their own inspection. March 29 of '22, it closed. April 29, it burned to the ground. They never made the first payment. The first payment was due the next day. I don't understand what happened. They said he was cooking at 3:00 in the morning, the guy that bought it. I don't know. Anyway, after they settled with their insurance company, we bought the property back. We donated it to the city, and the city took the house down, so it added that extra half acre of land to the park. We're truly blessed to have opportunities like that within this community, and as we tour people around, to be able to tell them about the number of parks that we have. You know, it's very meaningful to me, and of course, the rest of my brothers. And that's pretty much it. I'm grateful for the opportunity, Jerry. Thank you for all you've done.
Mr. Javalee, questions? Thank you. If there are no questions, thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Is anyone else like to speak, far or against this request? Not seeing any, I will close the public hearing and call for a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like signs, nay, and ayes have it. I want to thank the Javalees very much. All right. The last item on the agenda is PC 2024-33. Ms. Elaine?
All right. And this is for the soccer complex, which is out on, off of West Palmetto Street along I-95. The city had developed, has developed that as a soccer complex. It's zoned Commercial General, but the, it is immediately adjacent to property that was owned by Edward Young, and so the request was made to name the soccer complex, instead of just calling it the soccer complex, calling it the Edward Young Park. And he was born in Florence in 1920, and in the house that was right next to it, served in World War II, and then came back and became a successful dairy and crop farmer, earned many awards in agriculture, contributing to dairy farming in South Carolina, served in the South Carolina State Legislature, and then in U.S. Congress, and was active throughout his life in civic and church capacities here in the city of Florence. And so it was felt that it would be appropriate, especially since this land is immediately adjacent to his family's farmland, to name it after him. So that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Ms. Elaine. Any questions of staff? I will open and close the public hearing and call for a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
Until you hear Congressman Young, and he used to be my son's school teacher. His wife would be in there with me. I just got to get us on the record. He'd say, "Woman, read this." I'm like, you know, if I said it, my wife, she'd probably kill me. But they had a good, good thing for a long time doing that, so he was a good man.
Yeah, he was a good man.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Irvin, you got here just in time.
Yeah.
We're getting long-winded at our church meetings. I have a motion and a second to approve. Is there no further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same or nay, and ayes have it. Thank you all. And I'm glad that we deferred the person to get the community a chance to just pick that. All right, any other business that's good for the body, or any?
Happy holidays.
Yes, Merry Christmas to everyone.
See you next year.
All right, Mr. Moses?
No, we can stay here tonight. Make a motion to be adjourned.
All those in favor say aye. Thank you. Everybody be safe this morning.